Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, February 11th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. Our very first topic is a public comment period. Let me say a few things. I've already mentioned about filling out the cards. Anybody that would like to speak? If you would, when you, once you get up to the podium, if you could direct the microphones to sort of towards your height, that helps us get a better recording. And you, if you're comfortable doing so, because of the distancing, you are able to remove your mask if you so desire. The other things I would mention, we've got several topics on our agenda this evening, and I wanted to mention that two of the items that were previously on the agenda pertaining to the Georgetown property have since been withdrawn prior to this meeting, so they will not be part of tonight's meeting. The other thing that I thought I would mention is that we have on the one property, the Parsonage 501 Friendswood Drive property, that we tabled that meeting, tabled that topic from our last meeting, and we're going to at least vote to see if we bring it off the table this evening. So something that was discussed last meeting, I'm just making a point that there has been one significant change since the last meeting to this particular meeting, and that is that that changes that previously, we had talked in the last meeting that two of the trees were being saved, a hackberry and a sycamore. Since that time, we've received an update from the owner, from the developer of the property, that three trees are now slated to be protected as far on the site and saved. One of those is a, one of the large, what I would consider heritage tree oaks, that's on the corner of 518 and Spreading Oaks. So just so you know, that's been a change, doesn't change your comments at all, but I just want everybody to know the updated information, that if you've got comments, that's the latest that we've seen on our drawings. So with that, we will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and the commission's vice chair, Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Mr. Sassen is located to my left. Out of respect for those speaking during the public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. So it looks like we already have a few cards, and I will start in the order that they handed to me.
We've had, Brady, a little bit of a problem today. I've lost my yellow and red cards. So we're going with new technology and being able to develop, that is a yellow card, and it means you have one minute left. And then red means your time is up. So pretend it's yellow and red.
I'll pretend.
That's true, too.
My name is Brady Mora, and thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to talk about Frank Brown. I'm not going to talk about trees, I'm going to talk about the man who planted the trees. And before I get started, I want to quote scripture, and that is, "Ye are my friends if ye do whatsoever I commandeth you." That's John 15:14. And that is how Friendswood got its name. So I had a couple of calls from some ladies today. One of them was Margaret McDonald. She says, "Trees are as much a part of Friendswood as our name. When we moved to Friendswood over 60 years ago, trees and friendly people were the reason. Don't allow outsiders to cut off part of the very name of our special town." Margaret McDonald. I also had a call from our town historian, Joyce Ina Baker, and she wished me good luck and encouraged me. And I want to thank everybody else. I also had a visitor from our founder Frank Brown's granddaughter today. It just turns out she's 92 years old, just the same age as Joyce Ina Baker, and she was looking for firewood, but I just thought I'd mention that. But I would like to talk about the man that I believe planted these trees. There are five heritage live oaks on this property, 501, and I know they can't all be saved, and one is a good start, so I'll just take it from there. But they're all precious, they're irreplaceable, and they're really an asset. But Frank Brown was born in Indiana in 1850, and he was the 10th child to Hamm and Eliza Brown. And it wasn't long after that his father Hamm suffered some financial reverses and began to drink and became a drunk. So Frank decided at that time in his life he would never use alcohol or tobacco, and according to his biographer, he never did, but his biographer was his daughter, so. He moved on the family to Iowa, and then finally to Kansas, and at 21, he was a buffalo hunter and a teamster working for the railroad. And he fought in the Battle of the Dobie Walls in 1874, which is in, just near Amarillo on the Canadian River. Twenty-eight buffalo hunters stood off 700 plains, Indians, Cheyennes, and Comanches. And he was not what you would call the prim and proper Quaker, to put it bluntly. He carried two six guns and knew how to use them, and he knew how to use his fist. And he was a founder of towns, more than one. He built bridges, and he built canals, he built churches, and all that's gone, but he also planted trees. And I believe that he planted these trees in 1914, when the first elementary public school was built in Friendswood. It was called the Two Room Schoolhouse. My grandmother, Helen Brantley, attended school there with her twin sister Ellen Brantley. But he died in 1929, the same year as the stock market, and that's the same year that brought a lot of people to Friendswood, because they were looking for jobs during the Depression, and they found them here. So these trees mean a lot to a lot of people. I don't think you'll find a person in Friendswood that would like to see these trees gone. There's a man in Katy who owns this land, and he has every right to develop it, and I do not wish to see him get hurt financially on this property. I don't know if there's a vehicle that can get us there, and if it's money, then I don't have it, but maybe I can get it. If I would have some kind of dialogue with him, it might help. But at this point, my only recourse is just plead with y'all to ask for more time before we could do something we are going to regret for a long time. And anyway, I appreciate your time, and I just, I hope you make the honest decision from your heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brady. Mr. Randy Stein, if I read that correctly?
Thank you very much for the time. I don't have quite the history as Brady, although we have a large, a long time connection with Brady, as I have married into the Brown family. So from the history that I know, is the relatives of my wife are some of the original Quakers and some of the original ones that planted the trees down Spreading Oaks. We spent $30,000 in trying to protect the trees around our property by putting fences around. When we first moved in, not only did we have dogs, yes, we had a reason to put a fence up, but the junior high was still there. We had junior high football people that ran around the yard, ran around the block, and they would run through the yard, through the trees, those kind of things. We fought in front of city council to move our fence, to have a fence on the outside of our property, because it has now reduced down to less than 2,000, or less than two acres. So we fought to get it to the front property where we could protect those trees. Brady has been an integral part of helping us maintain those trees. You know, Friendswood, from my standpoint of what I know about it, look at the symbol, it's got a tree on it, it's got an oak tree on it. We need to save these trees. Yes, it costs money to replant them somewhere else. I hear there's maybe not quite a huge success, maybe a 50% success ratio of saving them. Why not try? Yes, it costs a little more for the developer. There's plenty of properties around that would probably love to have some of these trees. Maybe you can't move the 60-inch tree. We have one of those, or larger, in the backyard of our property. We spent a lot of money trying to salvage it from beetles that attacked. We need to save these trees. The ones that are 30 inches, the ones that are 20 some odd inches, could be easily replaced somewhere else. We need to try. And yes, it costs money, maybe part of the developer's expense of trying to move that tree, or move a few of those trees. Saving a hackberry tree? Come on. A hackberry tree is not one we need to worry about. It's the oak trees. It's the pecan tree, maybe. Some of the history of Friendswood is in those trees. Thank you. That's all I got.
No, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Didn't get a chance to fill out a card? Okay, next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held January 28th? Oops, that's correct, January 28th, 2021.
A motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Next on our agenda are action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Friendship Center to be located at 501 South Friendswood Drive. This item was tabled in our last meeting. Is there a motion to take this site plan from the table?
Motion to remove the site plan from the table.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay, this item is now taken from the table. Is there a new motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Aubrey, any additional, any new information since our last meeting?
Yes, sir. I had emailed in the update that the applicant did come back this week and is proposing to save T9, which if you're looking at the property, the tree to the left. They actually just resubmitted a landscape plan today, which I put on your diet, on the dais, that they did remove the trees underneath the canopies of the trees that they're saving, the new trees. It wouldn't be feasible to plant new trees underneath those canopies, so they removed those trees from the plan that you have before you. So it is a total of three trees being saved on the property, and I believe that Sal is here, if y'all have any other questions for him. Other than that, everything remained the same.
Aubrey, before I ask the applicant to come up, just to make sure that we understand, as far as you know, is there any further active negotiations or discussions going on, or what we see before us now is what the current plan is?
This is the plan right here.
Okay, I just wanted to double check before we went further. If the applicant's here, representatives of the applicant, and they'd like to speak? Good evening, sir. Could you state your name again for us? I'd appreciate that.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sal Thent with Everest Design Group. I'm the engineer of record for the project. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, okay. Just hang up, hang there for a second, and I'm sure we will, I bet we do have a question or two. Okay, then I'll start with Mr. Sassen.
So since we last met, I know there's been various discussions. That's what we had asked for last time. I'm pleased and thankful that you took that to heart, and it looks like there's a compromise on the table, that we are closer to what the citizens of Friendswood like, would like from where we were, and very much appreciate that. I haven't, I can find no reason to not approve the agenda. We are charged with following the law, the rule of law, and seeing that you comply with the requirements. What I would ask, if that's, if it's possible, is to, last time, we talked a little bit about perhaps planting some oak trees instead of crepe myrtles in some locations, so that in 10 or 15 years, it starts looking like a, not the same, but towards similar where we are. I would ask that you consider doing that, and I would encourage staff to encourage that as well. I think that would be a better position that we are at and wouldn't add appreciably to the cost, may not affect it very much at all. Replacing crepe myrtles with oaks, I think in several years, the crepe myrtles will not be much larger, while the oaks would eventually give some shade and a legacy that would look more in tune with the surrounding areas. But I want to thank you, Sal, personally, for taking to heart and helping facilitate the discussions, and I know partially went through you, so thank you.
And we have no objection of planting oaks in lieu of crepe myrtle.
Good. If, my personal view, and this is just me, around the edge to the extent possible, because you're on really three streets, you know, I really, it would be nice to have them on Winding Way, on, sorry, on Friends, on 518, but the two side streets, you know, right now there are oaks along those, and to the extent we can, to the extent you can, that would be very nice, and would be appreciated, I think, by more than just me.
I will coordinate with the staff on locations, and we will change.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Yes. Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, one comment and potentially one request. I want to make sure it's clear that despite maybe the sense that came across last time we met, that we do realize the rights of the property owner to develop here. Obviously, our ordinance will support this, so maybe, again, and I stated last time that we might have fallen short of what some of the public concerns are. I had asked last time for a full two-week extension, the full max, and I'm not sure if there's appetite for that here, but I would, I would like to make a motion to put this back on the table, if that's appropriate, and keeps us legal. I've not heard that, and this is at the request of some of the public to make sure that we've allowed the maximum amount of time. I understand that you might not be in a position to feel like negotiating further, but sitting here, I feel like it's an appropriate thing to do. It might not get the support from our, the rest of our commissioners here, but that's a motion I'd like to make to table for two more weeks.
Can we hold that motion to the end of the discussion period, and then let you make that?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, yeah, I think that's a better approach, yeah.
Okay.
So this, this one is a heartbreaking decision for me. I, I'm, I've always been the tree hugger on the, on the commission, and I feel like we have fallen short in our ordinances that we did not protect these better. So for that, we need to do better in the future to protect heritage, Friendswood heritage. I do greatly appreciate that there has been an effort to meet us halfway. We were asking for, for two of those heritage trees to stay. I agree, I would like to have a couple more weeks for negotiation. I absolutely do not know how I will vote. I am cognizant that it is the landowner's right, and we do not have an ordinance preventing it. But I, on the other hand, I truly feel that this plan is not in keeping with the spirit of downtown district for Friendswood and, and the spirit of, of the city, but it is legal. It does meet our ordinances and our requirements, so I'm very, I'm very torn on this.
We are also, I mean, if, Aubrey, if you could pull up the roadmap, I will sort of explain to you where our limitations are, and, you know, commission can decide what they would like to do, but I wanted to give you how our decisions evolve in terms of trying to save it, so.
Which, which one do you want?
The site plan will be fine, or?
Okay.
Yeah, the top one will be fine. I'm a tree hugger, so it's pretty much a struggle for me as an engineer, but I'll show you why we can save the second tree. Can you zoom in the?
Mm-hmm.
On the front, there, okay. There is a, you guys see the other outline? Maybe the landscape that shows the, yes? Okay. There is, there is another plan that shows the location of the trunk.
Yep.
Can you?
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, okay.
T.
T3.
Yeah.
Okay, right here.
Yeah.
So on one of the plans we have, we have the canopy that we went out and measured the tree, it's about 46 feet from the center of it, and I don't know whether it shows up better on the tree protection plan? Okay, so here it is, we didn't accentuate it, but here, you can see the outline right here of the canopy. So, so on this particular one, we were able to redesign it such that the majority of the tree sits off, off the main drag here on 518, and able to protect it by putting an island around it. I mean, although we have to clip the trees with, what the arborist to make sure, because normally on these oak trees, the trunk is being here, there are root system that extends right at the drip line of the tree. So when we, when we fill and construct improvements, it sort of kills the oxygen and nutrients along here, so we have to trim back these limbs so that it doesn't die. On this particular one right here, as you can see, I mean, we're limited in design from a couple of things. We have to be 75 feet minimum away from the tax or entrance, so we can't, we can't locate this anywhere else, except this is the closest we can be. So having, having a limitation of where, where the, the minimum distance from the 518 has to be, that sort of dictates where the building has to be. So as you can see, from geometry perspective, having this, this drive-out, to be cost-effective as a, as a design, if you're spending money on a drive-out, you have, you need to have parking space on the east side, which essentially pays for that item. So having the symmetry, the next logical design feature is you put the, the next parking space here and here, that gives you the drive-out. So with this configuration, having this existing tree, we're cutting over half of this canopy out, and survivability of the tree isn't, isn't there. Now, we looked at able to put a similar island on this side, then what happens is that it distorts the entire design of this, where the building is, because now the drive-out has to come here and bisect this, this item. So his, his parking access is drastically changing, and he's not giving us permission to do so. So, so that's why this, this T3 is being here, and we've got a paving here, it's going to cut the root system out, so that's why we couldn't save that. So I just wanted to share with you, you know, the limitation that we faced based on, at minimum access has to be on 518, a certain distance, and, and this location.
Great, thank you, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you very much for explaining that, both to us and the public, of the thought process for tree number three, and that was going to be my question, is, you know, we wanted 3 and 9, and what we could do, and it makes sense, and I guess we all know it makes sense. It is a tough decision. I really appreciate you guys working on getting tree nine on the other side and keeping that, saving that tree, that's working with us. It's a tough decision, but like we said, our ordinances didn't protect those, and that's, and that's on us, not on y'all. So I do appreciate you guys working with us, explaining some of this stuff to us. I know we've gone through it, and being able to compromise and save tree nine, so thanks for that. It still makes it a tough decision, but, but I did want to say thank you, because I, and I, I know that you guys put some time and energy and thought into designing this, so thank you.
Commissioner Hinckley?
I do want to say, I appreciate you being here. I know that you're in a tough position, so I just want to start with that. I like the consideration of the three trees that have been saved on the plan, and honestly, looking at number three, I can see the, the real issues there, so. Personal opinion, I don't really like the look of the building, I don't think it fits our downtown area, but that's not our job. We're not here to go off personal opinion. So that's where it kind of gets hard, you got to break away from that sometimes, but from a legal standpoint, I don't see any, any issues with the current design, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Hi, thank you, and I sure appreciate the effort that has been made to ante up, if you will, toward the commission's discussion last time, and securing tree nine in a protected status. It would sure be great to get another oak or two in there, but it, I do understand it's a, it's a difficult balancing act, and you painted that picture vividly with the tree, tree three discussion. It will be a hard decision, and as before, I spoke, the commissioners ahead of me reflected on the fact that there is nothing wrong with the plan from a technical, legal perspective. It's, it's this tree issue that continues to be a concern. So thank you for your time.
So not to be redundant, there are a couple of things I would like to add that weren't asked about. Just, I want to understand, just for sake of, I think everybody would be interested in knowing, is, what's the current construction schedule going on with this building? So when would they, when would you expect to start construction, as an example?
Beginning of March.
Okay, soon?
Yes.
Okay. And? Okay, and you expect it to be finished?
It'd be a six months, eight months period.
Okay. Okay, interesting. I, I just didn't know. It wasn't, wasn't part of our drawing package, so interesting, thank you. So I, I have to ask, because it looks like it's, it's going to come up in just a second. What's the impact to your project for a two, another two-week delay?
I can't, for me personally, nothing, um, in terms of, of getting approval. For the owner, obviously, he has financing commitments and delivery for his end users. So, um, I, I don't have authority to, you know, by concurrence or, 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 or request for, you know, a vote.
But, but what you're saying is there, there potentially a concern from the owner's perspective of, um, missing deadlines for, for financing and tenants and that sort of thing?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I, I just didn't know.
Yes.
Didn't know what that was.
I mean, he can't, he can't close on his finance until he gets, he gets approval and, and of course, um, you know, if, if we're not having construction end of Fa- end of February, then his, his timeline is moved to, uh, late March. And from the time he gets approval, there is a closing, I think thirty-day window to close and, and to get, to get it going.
Okay, okay. I believe that's all my questions for you. So thank you very much for, for coming in and talking to us this evening. Oh, yes.
So are there, um, any concessions that the city could make? Are, are any, um, negotiations that, that we could have that would allow for, um, a different setback or a, a, a different, anything different that would allow us to save an additional, um, century oak? Is there something that, that we're constraining you with that doesn't allow you to, um, um, make that further concession?
No, there isn't. I mean, since the last meeting, we had a extensive meeting with his architect. Uh, I'm, I'm the engineer of records. I'm not the billing designer and, and, but we had a meeting with Blair, um, and the owner and we looked at different scenario, um, moving the billing back, um, reducing the depth and, I mean, he, he, he has to have certain amount of square footage to make his return on investment and, and, um, he's not, he's not prepared to, um, redesign at this point. You know, um, this is the, this is really the, the long year bending that we had done and this is the best we can get. I mean, the initial reaction frankly, uh, is no, you know, that he was not. And we received a letter from Murad to, for him to meet the city manager, you know, to, to come in and talk about incentives to see trees and, and, um, you know, the, the original rea- reaction was, was not to, I mean, he didn't make the, the effort to make me, have a meeting. You know, we insisted that, you know, that we're not going to go forward unless we do some type of a compromise and this is the best we've been able to get. I mean, two weeks for, 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 for the city to ponder, you can, but the result's not going to change. I mean, far as I know as of today. This is, I mean, we spent the whole, you know, almost ten days trying to get to this, to this agreement, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wish I was, had the authority to, to represent, well, but I don't, so.
Well, I, I think the, the state rules are that we can, oh, did I undo it? I think the state rules are that even if we, we do push it off in another two weeks, if there is nothing that is illegal about, um, there's, there's no, um, legal reason to deny, then it just goes forward whether will we or ill we, right? So all that we would do by delaying would be to, I guess, create ill will.
Can you comment on that schedule? Is that the schedule we're facing?
So we have to render a decision within thirty days.
Okay, so will we have another meeting, planning and zoning meeting prior to that thirty day?
Um, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth of February.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, which it was on the first agenda for January twenty-eighth. So I think that's less than thirty days.
I think that's right. Commissioner Savin.
Yeah, Aubrey, has, has Murad given any sense that more time would help in terms of negotiations? Are there undescribed negotiations or offers that are on the table or, or anything of that sort? As far as you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
He would have let you know if, if there was, okay, thank you for that.
I, I just wanted to, to ask if, how we can annotate. I, I really like that we were going to switch some of those crepe myrtles to oaks. I think that, that is a, a good olive branch as well. If you could, i- does that need to be annotated somewhere? I, I, I think that makes a big decision or, sorry, influences my decision. I like that, that idea and I think if we could change that, that would be better.
We can, you can definitely amend the motion and we can work with them to see where we can do that. The difficult part of that is the utilities, um, that are in our right of ways. Um, I got an email this week from our city engineer and our public works director, um, on a completely different project, but live oaks are wreaking havoc on our infrastructure. They tear up sidewalks, they, you know, rip up sewer lines and, uh, storm sewer lines. So we kind of have to be careful where we put them, but we can definitely go back and look at the utilities on this property and work with them. You can amend the motion to, you know, for them to work with staff to replace trees where possible. Um, I don't know exactly, I hate to put a number on that because I don't know what that number would be. But we'll, you know, we have a good working relationship with sales, so we can, um-
And I think he even mentioned that's some of the, the oaks with the shallow root structure causes him problems for the parking lot and stuff, just like-
Well, and I know last time Blair said there were some hybrid oaks that they've had luck with. Um, maybe there's a different type of oak that's maybe not quite so invasive. So, you know, we can talk to Blair about that as well.
I mean, one other comment that's, as Aubrey mentioned, we did get received from Texas Mexico Power is they don't want, you know, oak trees, large trees under the, under the utility easements. They, I mean, they, in fact, they asked us to, to select only type, type two trees, which is like Texas laurel and stuff that doesn't grow more than fifteen, ten, fifteen feet, so.
All the overhead for Texas Mexico is on that side of 518. And, I mean, we don't want bees cut in them when they start-
And, and I know, I mean, we've, we've inspected the, the T9 tree. There's a branch that has, uh, grown over the power line. You know, it's, it's inside it, so they'll have to come in and correct all that for us.
I actually have another question on, uh, tree nine, actually. You know, that's one of the, um, high visible oak trees right there, so, um, what's the, um, what's the chances of that tree not making it through construction? And is there a, uh, a plan to protect that tree? How does that set up?
I mean, uh, we will have a, uh, consultation with the arborist. And obviously, the, the most simple, um, protection is that we will have to put a construction fencing at the drip line so that we don't have, we don't have a lot of, uh, fill on it. Most oaks will survive with about one to two inch of fill per year. And, and there is a, there is a portion where the paving is coming on and we'll have to, uh, consult with them. Normally, if we're cutting, if the roots are cut because we're putting the paving in, um, then we have to correspondingly trim the, the limbs. But one of the, one of the most costly thing is that cities standard require before we pave, the sub base has to be lime. And once you put lime treatment in, that's very caustic to, to trees. And we'll have to look at, um, either, either replacing with cementable, I send as a base or some type of structural. So there's going to be extra effort to try to save it, but we'll have a arborist as a, as a consultation on how to, how to save it and maintain it.
Very good, like that answer. I guess I had a few more comments, but I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm done asking you questions. So thank you again very much for coming tonight. Been very helpful.
You're welcome.
So I guess I just wanted to make a comment, a few comments for the public and for the rest of the commission. Based on what, at least that I'm hearing tonight, that there are no further discussions planned at this point. Doesn't mean there can't be. Uh, there have been many, many discussions going on, uh, behind the scenes over the last several weeks, uh, even before the, the last meeting. So I want to at least point out that my, my concern is that it doesn't sound like there's, you know, it's not, it's not everything that we wanted. Definitely not everything that I wanted, but we are required to follow the city's ordinances. And once this property was sold by the previous owner with no restrictions, then the, the new owner could basically do what they wanted. And in day one of owning the property, could have taken down all these trees and the owner hasn't done so. And I've been thankful for that because that left us opportunities to do at least what we were able to do. So although saving, uh, the one large oak and then the, the two other trees, um, may not satisfy everybody, it, it's at least something. And I'd hate for, over the next week or two, for the wrong messages to get sent or some other, something else happened and the owner comes in and just takes them all down. So, you know, it's, it's, we could lose more. So I'm just making that, that comment of how I'm thinking about this. The, the last thing is, you know, we have these ordinances and we, and the tree ordinance has been modified through the history of Friendswood many, many times. And, and I've only found several of the times it's been changed. There was a, kind of an all-star tree, uh, heritage tree task force put together not that long ago. And, you know, they came up with many recommendations that are, are in place today. We think we can improve upon that. We realize that it's not going to change this property, but we can try to change future sales. So we, future properties as they develop. So we are actively, just for the public's notice, we are actively working on, looking to see if there's some opportunities to enhance our tree ordinance. Not, it still has to go, we'll have to go through city council and be voted upon and discussed with them, but we are working along those lines, um, a- as we speak. So those are the, the basic comments I had. We do have, um, I'm coming back to you, Commissioner Perry. Do you want to still make that motion?
Uh, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the schedule, right? So if we, if we vote on this tonight, the next step, I mean, this is, just to make sure I understand the schedule, is to go, it goes in front of council?
No, we're the final approval on this.
So there's, there's no way to get, yeah, that's right. There's no way to give council a shot at this, right? So it's us or nothing.
Yeah.
Look, I, I, s- since I sat in this seat, I was pro-developer. I mean, this is how the ordinance are built. I'd like to see it downtown, um, with the vision, um, of, of some of the efforts that are going over there. So if I was required to vote, I would have supported this. But I understand the sensitivities and I feel a little irresponsible if I'm, uh, don't reflect some of the will of the public here. So yes, I'd still like to make a motion to, uh, to table this and, and, and I, I don't want to impact the developer. I want a good relationship. I want them to be successful, but really comes down to it. I feel a little irresponsible. And if it fails, I'm okay with that. But yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
So can I make a comment before we go to, to vote on? There is no doubt that this is an extremely sensitive, um, vote, that, that this is sensitive on the table. Is, is there a way to get city councils counsel on this before the commission votes? Uh, because they do have, no, it's us or nothing.
So I guess, um, there wasn't, uh, there was a proposal from a contractor to move the two trees. The price tag on that was three hundred and fifty to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, you know, there's the subject of where do we move the trees to? So, and then, you know, the, the value in the trees is them being on this property. So that proposal, you know, was thrown out there this week. The city, we can't spend tax dollars on private property unless there's a public easement of some sort. So it would, you know, it would take a lot of time to get through city council, to get public easements and then, like, where are we going to get the money from? So there's a lot of, I just, um, you know, holding the developer up on-
A lot to do in two weeks.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what else is going to be done that hasn't been done in the last several weeks as well. It's going to change anything. I, I do, I definitely understand the desire to give more people time and that was one of the reasons I think we all tabled it in the last meeting. But anyway, you, you have made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this matter until our next meeting. All those in favor? Motion failed. So we have a standing, then a, a motion to approve.
Yeah, but I think, uh, I think what we talked about was modifying the motion to approve and I'd like to, to modify the motion to reflect, to, to encourage negotiations between the city staff and, and the developer to, uh, to the extent possible, to replace the crepe myrtles with, uh, oaks, preferably live oaks where there's no overhead lines and, uh, hybrid oaks or, or something suitable to the extent possible, so that in ten, fifteen, twenty years, uh, the property still retains some of the flavor that we're going to be losing here in the next few weeks.
Commissioner Perry, you want to second it again or?
Yeah, I'll second it again, thank you.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second before us. All those in favor? Okay, motion passed. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for- Okay, our next ish, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the final plat of Avalon at Friendswood Section One. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
With a second?
Second.
Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, typically this would have been on our consent agenda, but, um, we were a little tight on reviews, so, um, we didn't know if we might have comments. But, um, everything to this point, um, has been addressed as far as the commission. Their landscape plan, um, was in your backup materials. Since the residential lots do back up to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, um, they're required to do the six-foot, uh, screening, which is their subdivision fence, and then a tree every twenty-five feet, half of those being four-inch caliper and half two-inch caliper. So I believe they meet that requirement and, uh, part of this, approving this plat will approve that site, or that landscape plan, uh, for the subdivision as well. They are, this is still just for the fifty lots. A lot of the reserves in there are for future residential development. Um, I think we do have some forward motion with, uh, League City, um, for the, it's not a land swap, but a land transaction, um, to get the rest of the property for the lots that are going to be around the south side of the lake. So, uh, like I said, we've got some forward motion on that, so hopefully we can address that soon and they can move forward, um, doing their additional lots.
Aubrey, I, I wanted to just make sure I heard something correctly. I saw the, the landscaping in there for the community overlay district on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, but you said that included in there also was the landscape plan for the subdivision itself? So how, how many trees per lot and all that sort of stuff?
So the landscaping for a residential lot is just one tree per lot. Their landscape package is like over and above. They're going to do a lot of landscaping on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard in the median.
Saw that.
Which is going to require a license agreement in the future. Um, and they are proposing live oaks in that median and there's a storm sewer line going down the middle of it. So we're going to have to address that. So you're not approving the median landscaping, only the landscaping up next to the residential lots, so. But yeah, it's a very pretty landscaping package and, uh, the rec center, when you first drive into the subdivision, is going to be very nice, uh, some nice amenities for those residents.
Okay, is the applicant here tonight? If you'd like, any comments you'd like to make? I bet there might be a question or two as well coming to your way. If you could provide us your name, please.
Yes, sir, Bobby Skinner with Taylor Morrison Homes. Thanks for your time this evening. It's been heart-wrenching. I guess I'm here to answer questions. I, I will say that, uh, it, it's, I, I hope it's been reciprocal, but thoroughly enjoyed working with staff. I think there's been some really positive give and take on both sides. And with that, what may I answer for you?
Okay, I will, uh, start with Commissioner Hinckley.
First question, and it's not really for you, but Aubrey. The transaction between League City and Friendswood, how, how does that work? I don't understand that part.
Uh, so it's a, it'll be a boundary agreement between the two cities to adjust our city limits. limits, um, and so, Friendswood will actually take over. We don't have any land to exchange for them, which is another way for cities to adjust their boundaries. Um, but, uh, there is a proposal for, um, basically to reimburse League City for some of the tax dollars that they would have incurred if they would have had those lots. So, for a period of time, that's still in negotiations. So, they will still get, you know, some benefit from that property for a period of time.
So, the, so is that a hundred percent go, or is that something that could hold up this project?
Um, I think, like I said, I think we've got some pretty good traction. Um, it, it will hold up the project eventually, and so that's, I've been hounding them over there, like, we need to get this figured out. Um, because like I said, the fifty, the fifty lots was mainly for, um, the access to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. Once the Boulevard is built, which should be done by June, um, they could build some additional lots, but it's looping the water line and planning the sewer system, because the sewer, the gravity of the sewer goes towards Friendswood. And so, servicing those other thirty-seven lots that they have planned on the south side of the lake from League City don't make sense, as, you know, as far as they will be in the infrastructure at that point.
Yeah. And, um, you answered my other question, was that, um, I'd noticed it was only, um, the only access on this drawing is from the, um, from the, um, West Ranch. So, but you're saying Friendswood Lakes will be done in, uh, June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, that, my, my concern was just the traffic through, um, through, um, the other neighborhoods, so, um, other than that, I don't necessarily have any other questions this time.
Okay. Commissioner Mann.
And mainly today is just the, the, as we spoke before, the lots from three to twelve along that Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, is that right?
Yeah, those are the lots that back up to the Boulevard right, currently.
Okay. That's it.
Commissioner Clark.
Uh, what, um, Aubrey, I'm a little, uh, uh, I guess confused about, um, how, how this, uh, will work. You, you say the, the Boulevard will be finished here in four, four months, five months or so. Um, when, when is the, uh, uh, I mean, when, when do we start construction? When are the houses going to be ready for occupancy and stuff like that?
Um, so, part of the negotiations that we worked out was for Taylor Morrison to build, um, a portion of the Boulevard coming from the West Ranch side.
Okay.
Um, so that they, it's their secondary entrance, but it gave them their initial point of access to be able to have the fifty, the fifty lots. And so, that's, um, so they were going to build that, because we didn't know the timing on the rest of the Boulevard, and so, they didn't want to, you know, that to hold up the project. So, that was part of the negotiation, was for them to build that entrance.
I see.
So, the Boulevard won't hold up their fifty lots. And so, they, their final plat, um, once it's approved, they got to get approval from the drainage district, they've got to get out there and install their, uh, water, sewer, drainage, and streets. Um, and then, once the public part of that is, is accepted by city council, we'll record the plat, and then they can sell lots.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Sassen.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, Aubrey, you kind of implied it, have you, at, at one time, there was discussion that League City would be making some offers, but you had never heard from actual League City, you've heard them through the contractor, through the, through the developer, and so that's not really how it works. Uh, have you actually heard from League City themselves?
Yes, we met with League City staff back in October, and so that's where that proposal came from.
Okay, and I don't need to know the details of the proposal, although, um, uh, it, it seems to me that if we're going to be providing, if Friendswood's going to be providing services for this land and giving the taxes away, doesn't, doesn't quite seem like a, a square deal to me, if, if, but, uh, but I will leave it to the, the negotiating power of the city, which has never failed me in the past. Um, the one other comment I would make, and it's more to, uh, staff again, is that if you choose to go away from live oak trees, my, my personal guidance, I'm just one of the commissioners, is that you try to pick a theme and be consistent with it. My, my personal view is, is if you go to Palm Springs in California, they have palm trees, I hate palm trees, but when you have fifty of them in a row on both sides of a tree, of a street, it's pretty darn impressive. Uh, what makes downtown, and I, my big push for live oaks downtown is, we have live oaks downtown, up and down downtown, and so having a lot of them there. If you choose to change away from live oaks, then change to something else and develop a theme for the street, that's, that's what I would encourage. Um, and something that's less invasive for sewer pipes, I can appreciate why that's important.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, no, thanks for all the hard work on this, I think, I think this is going to be nice. I am impressed with the landscaping that you guys are doing. It's, at, at least on paper, I have a hard time visualizing, but my wife, who does have a good ability to visualize, says that's going to be really pretty. So, I have to trust her on that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lundquist.
So, I've been a fan of the Avalon project from, from day one. It, it has just been beautifully presented, and, and this is no less. Um, so, I, I have no qualms, I really like what you're doing. Uh, if you can't have live oaks there, what, is there cons? I mean, what's the?
We have our qualified tree list, the list, the trees are classified in, you know, class one, two, and three, and then they're also classified by sizes. And so, our ordinance already does require, uh, does, you know, five and ten feet from underground and overhead power lines and utilities. Um, so, we'll, we'll look at the tree list and see what other options, uh, there are.
I am, like, not a fan of crepe myrtles. I've never...
Uh, the other main tree they had in their proposal was, um, like, a little gin magnolia. They had a lot of magnolias.
I believe so.
That would be lovely, and that would really go along with your Avalon, kind of deep south.
I, I think there's, it, it, it's a, it's a challenging task, um, with the overhead, with, with the pipeline through there, uh, and, and then the utilities. Um, but, but, trust me, we're, we're going to, it, it may not look consistent, like the palm trees going down the road, uh, but, but we're going to have plenty of, of beautiful trees.
Yeah, I think a lot of us up here are used to dealing with competing requirements. Yeah, so, you just, um, what you do with that is you make sure that everybody's yelling at you at the same volume, and then you know you've...
Yes, ma'am.
That's when you know you've gotten there.
Right.
Commissioner Perry?
Uh, no comments, this is one of my pro-developer votes, so I'm all over the place tonight. Um, but I, I, I will make a point later when we get to our individual comments. Um, I think there's, there's some runway here. Nothing to do with this development, but talk, talking about lot size, so, want to make sure we address it.
I had, uh, one comment and two easy questions.
Great.
One, yeah, understood. Uh, I really applaud the recreation center, it didn't, when the development started, it didn't look quite like that, uh, and, and there was a lot of consternation about the lots going all the way closer down to the lake and so forth. So, I think you guys stepped up and did a great job on that.
Thank you.
So, the, I agree, I think that is a big, huge step forward. Uh, I saw on the drawing, this may be, end up being an Aubrey question, but either one jump in there, but I saw on the drawings that a four-foot sidewalk along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard was going to be done by others, and I was trying to figure out who the others is. Oh.
That's me.
Oh. It's on your drawing as others, but okay.
But the Boulevard sidewalk should be done by the county, because the county, the, the portion that they're building, and then they'll build their portion.
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be...
Sidewalks are usually with the streets.
I, now I get it.
The Boulevard payment contractor is going to...
On the, on the section that you're doing, but there's other sections, okay. Uh, and I take that back, I only had one question and two comments, so, uh, and, and it's just, you know, I need to get over, over it and move on, but I just noticed in your drawing and looking at the, the lots and so forth, so of what you're building, there's only eight homes there that have greater than ninety-foot widths on the lots. That was part of our unit, planned unit development, and, and some of the things we discussed earlier, and there are forty-two that are less than ninety feet. Um, so, I, I, I know you're going to live to the, uh, allocation that we all agreed to, but it was interesting to me to see that there were just eight. But I understand what you're doing and why, and, and again, by combining some of that green space that you've, that you're landscaping at the front of the neighborhood, and then the recreation center, that goes a long way to me being much happier with the, with the smaller lot size, so thank you again.
Absolutely.
It was just a comment. Okay, that was, that's all I had, unless anybody else had anything. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Can I add one thing? With the boundary adjustment, I just wanted to clarify that city councils for League City and Friendswood both have to approve those agreements, so, those are, will go through the proper channels for approval.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, our next action item was a consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Georgetown Section One, that has been withdrawn. And the one after that was, uh, the last action item was the consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Georgetown Boulevard Street Dedication Phase Two, that has also been withdrawn for now. So, next on our agenda is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, February twenty-fifth, and our first meeting in March will be Thursday, March eleventh.
Great, thank you. Communications are next, commissioner updates, uh, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to communicate, suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? I will start with Commissioner Perry.
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, so, one, uh, my liaison role over to FDEDC, um, so they're, they're YouTubers now, so they sit in these seats, uh, was that their first meeting in, in the...
Uh, no, they've had a few.
Okay, all right, so I want to make sure you guys know that, and then, that takes the burden off of me of having to give you so much detail. They covered two things, so we know, we got, uh, briefing from them on the tech stock grant, um, so they've made progress there, so they seem to be happy with the direction that that's going, um, even have a schedule. Um, and then, um, they, they assess signage, so this is signage coming into the city as part of the downtown look, uh, so they're, they're making progress there, too. So, they're starting to set some up and knocking them down, so, um, all good, all good progress. So, I was happy to be at the meeting, that was the first one that I've attended since the assignment. Uh, for the planning subcommittee, um, if you agree, we'll, we'll propose, um, at the next meeting, a changed summary of the future land use map. So, we met again tonight and got to the point where, um, we feel confident, at least to bring some things up to you guys and open up the floor to debate, so we'll present some changes and then, uh, allow for some discussion. Uh, and then we've also set a schedule preliminarily, um, uh, as of this meeting today, that's going to set us, um, on a course, um, to get through all of this through, um, the end of November, I believe is what we set. So, um, a lot of steps in between, and we'll, we'll detail that out in the agenda. Um, and then, on the agenda next, next week, if it's, next meeting, excuse me, uh, and then two comments, we're still, we're still all over the place with this oak tree thing, so, uh, apparently no one but the citizens wants oak trees, because I, I heard, uh, limitations, uh, just in our communication tonight. So, obviously, there's a lot of work for us to do there, um, with the caveat that we heard at the last meeting, that, um, if you put a lot of things about saving trees, that hurts property values, so that's an important thing for us to consider. So, if there's direction to take from council and with the ordinance subcommittee, I'm happy to help and support, um, because I don't like sitting here with these tough decisions. Um, anything that we can do to make our life easier up here, um, I think is a good thing. Which brings me to number two, uh, lot size has been something a bit contentious. Um, we know that that comes up quite a bit, and our ordinances do allow, um, for some specific use permits and some, and some weighing in, so, uh, this is just a plea, and maybe comments later when we hear from our council member, um, if there's some, some desires or, or if there's other avenues that we need to pursue in the ordinance subcommittee to start talking about that, because that always seems to come up. Avalon was a good example, where, um, we thought it was a great development, um, but I'm certainly sensitive to other opinions, so, if we can, uh, if we can make some headway to clean some of those things up, I think it'll make us, uh, better commissioners sitting here and make better decisions for Friendswood. So, I said my piece. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Lundquist.
So, I apologize, I wrote notes from KFB, and I can't seem to find them, so, going off of memory is not going to pull everything in. Um, they are still meeting by Zoom, um, just the executive committee, and then they send out minutes. And, uh, the last one was pretty lengthy, but the only thing that I can remember is we have, uh, Spring Sparkle coming up pretty soon, that's where, um, they have the, the drive-through and the shredding and, and things like that. So, that'll be coming up soon, but I know for sure that we'll have another commissioner meeting, and I will find those notes and write them down instead of putting them on my cellphone.
Great, thanks.
Obviously, I'm not going to be able to find them that way.
Thank you. Commissioner Sassen.
Uh, yeah, I had, I guess, one question for you, Marcus, uh, the schedule that you said that they kind of came up with, when, do they say when that sidewalk is going to go in?
They did.
That's all I needed to know, thanks.
It's on YouTube. Yeah. Uh, yeah, you know, I, I was in, I was in such listen mode, because that is information I had not heard from for a while, so I had forgotten that I was there to report back to you guys.
I never made a mistake like that, so I can't understand that.
Yeah, sure, yeah, so, um, I'll take the action.
I'm, I'm curious about that, just, it's more personal curiosity. Uh, I got...
I was, I was there as a fan, I mean, so, you know, Aubrey knows.
The project went out for bid, um, in the beginning of February, so they are getting, in the process of getting bids right now, so hopefully they'll be starting construction in, like, March or April.
Next month? Sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I remember them being pretty happy with what they...
Yeah, next month would be impressive. That's good, okay? Nice to see some real progress, that'd be great. Uh, I got to attend the city council meeting, uh, and I know, uh, our council liaison will bring us up to date on a lot of things that went on there, but of particular importance to P and Z, uh, is, um, that they, um, approved the ordinance, second reading of the, uh, lot on Friendswood Link Road, to go from multi-family residential garden home district to neighborhood commercial, so that is done and dusted. And, uh, they, uh, approved the first reading of the two ordinance changes that we had proposed in the last, in our last meeting. Uh, also got to go to the drainage district, um, they approved the Avalon Section One Drainage Final Plat, so you guys are on a roll. Um, and, uh, they said there was a hundred and eight thousand loads now removed from Avalon, which is, constitutes approximately seventy-five...
Avalon, not from, from...
Avalon, from, um, Imperial Estates, and that's about seventy-five percent of the way there, so they're getting there. When you look at the land, it seems like they're even further than seventy-five percent, but I trust their judgment better than mine. Uh, we also had a planning subcommittee meeting, uh, Dick and Har, uh, uh, Harry and I all met, uh, with Becky. Um, we are, um, actively working on several things, including and especially the tree gardens. Uh, we hope to, um, have, uh, something in the near future, uh, that would be, uh, something more, uh, conducive to where we want to be, uh, at least what our group thinks, and, and we'll present it to the rest of the team here, and, and there'll be a lot of discussion. So, that's coming fairly soon. Then I'll let Becky talk about some of the other specifics we're doing on that. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Mann.
Just a, a little bit more on the lot size there, because that's going to, that's going to play out as we go through the planning subcommittee, and we do the future land use map and the zoning throughout, that, that's going to play a role in some of our long-term goals, so just as long as we make sure that we discuss that and come up with that.
Commissioner Hinckley.
Uh, zoning board of adjustments did not have a meeting, um, but, of course, we had our subcommittee meeting today, and I, I think we got some good traction on the trees. Um, and, uh, there are some items with the, the lot width on our list coming up, so...
Commissioner Clark.
Well, I'm just, uh, following along in Commissioner Sassen's footsteps here, so we're, we're kind of double-team, whatever he said, I said, too, but, um, uh, I guess, Becky, are you going to talk about the, uh, the ordnance? Sure, okay, thanks.
Okay, the only thing I had additional to add is, um, we passed out last time, ahead of the last meeting, on our 2021 priorities list, so I have not seen any revisions to that come through from anybody, so unless you, you have something that you're just dying to, to put, um, we're going to go ahead and lock that down and issue it, which does include looking at single-family residential lot widths, by the way, as part of our, our priorities for 2021. So, we'll lock that down up until as soon as it's done, and then we'll have changes to make, and that'll be a living document, obviously. So, that's coming out. Okay. That was all I had. And next, Mr. Graffon, council member Graffon.
How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Commissioners, staff, citizens all, um, Marcus, I do want you to know that we unanimously approved those two ordinances that allowed for single-family residential in high-density areas... areas. I think the council appreciates having things written into the ordinance, that people who come up that want to develop, they can see what they, they're allowed to do and do it. I do know that we had the PUD over here at Heritage, where I'm reluctant to support PUDs, but that passed unanimously. So it just depends on what's coming up. And I know work sessions may be a good thing, when we start talking about lot sizes and that sort of thing. I think that would be awesome. As far as this week, we were really busy. In addition to the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District meeting, we also, that Tuesday, had the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee. And for those of you who don't know that, what that is, it's a committee of board of directors. I'm director for the city of Friendswood. But we, I represent, but we have stakeholders from 288 all the way to Galveston Bay. We have the commissioner. He also sits on the board, Ken Clark. And we have Myron Jones. He's the Harris County Consolidated Drainage District. He sits on the board. Larry Milliken over at League City, League City's represented. We have a lot of people. And then all the engineers, like city of Friendswood, Had Hill and Samantha, they participate. All the drainage districts are represented. And we had some really good updates at that, that meeting. And one of them that was at the meeting was, of course, Melissa Washington with the GLO. And she updated us on some things that are going on with the CDBG mitigation dollars. The 2015 mitigation dollars are going to be awarded next week. So that's really good. We're finally seeing the GLO come and give us some money. That's 2015. The 2016 mitigation dollars are going to be awarded the week after that. Now, the big dollars that we're all concerned about in our projects over at Whitcomb and the Forest Bend Project and all those things that Samantha and Hill have been working really hard on, that is going to be announced in March. So we're really looking forward to that. That has been oversubscribed by a lot of dollars. So if we don't get it on this first try, there is round two, and it's a billion dollars, and that'll be awarded six months later. So guys, we're finally seeing some, it's three years, we're finally seeing the dollars come out of the GLO. So that's going to be good. She also mentioned something that I thought was really interesting. And we got the preliminary, preliminary draft for method of distributions for the Harris-Galveston Area Council Board of Directors Water Resources Committee. They're going to be allocating $209,410 that's being sent to them from the housing, urban development, and the state. Now, this isn't on an individual disaster like Hurricane Harvey. This is more a regional approach. And they had the preliminary draft. And the dollars that we're looking at to be allocated to the city of Friendswood is $1,299, $1,299,510, about 6%, 0.6% of it. But hey, our Honorable Mayor Mike Foreman, he, he's a liaison to the HGAC, and so is Councilmember Sally Branton. So they're all going to be heading to that meeting. They're all, this is the time to get into it, is in the preliminary draft stage. But still, the Friendswood's looking at almost $1.3 million from that. So that would be good. And it's not allocated to one specific disaster like Harvey. I do want to mention, Myron Jones and Scott, several other people with the Harris County Flood Control District gave some, a really good presentation. And that presentation is online, if you would like to go look at it. I'm going to touch briefly on some of the things that they went on, that's happening on the Clear Creek Watershed, the South Belt, the South Belt Stormwater Detention Basin, if y'all probably know, that's in the Phase 3 final construction. That is anticipated to be completed in spring of 2022. And Phase 1 and Phase 2 are already completed. And that's moving along. What's really close to us over here, too, is the Mud Gully Channel Conveyance Improvement. That's on Beamer Road. And it's usually when you get to Astoria, where the hospital is over there, Southeast Memorial, what's used to be Southeast Memorial Hospital. And as you go to Scarsdale, that's going to be done. It's, they started construction in January of this year. That's on Beamer Road, and it's anticipated to be completed in spring of 2022. But they have a traffic control plan. And I, just like all the citizens who are going to be going to the hospital, are trying to go to Scarsdale, on Beamer Road, going out that direction, to go on to www.hcfcd, Harris County Flood Control District.org/mudgully. And like I said, the phases are going to be done from Sage Down Lane to Scarsdale Boulevard. That's Phase 1. And they're going to have to go under an old bridge. And when they go under those old bridges, they're going to have to close those bridges down. So they're going to be detouring you from, from various places. Stage 2, or Phase 2, is from Scarsdale to Astoria, and the hospital's on Astoria. And then Phase 3 is just a little small section so that it can be attached to the South Belt Detention Center. So that's the Mud Gully. That's close to us. That's going to be important for a lot of people, especially on the Harris County side over there. What was interesting, as far as the federal project, what showed up on the, the new map, and you'll see this if you go to that, is the Friendswood Stormwater Detention Basin. And if you haven't heard of that, neither did I. But, but that is the property that was purchased, that all that dirt was moved over there on Dixie Farm Road, right there, by the paintball, the paintball gun place. Yeah, well, they, Harris County had purchased that. And that is now being engineered, preliminary engineering's going on with that right now. And they've asked the Corps of Engineers and the federal government in Washington to include that in the federal project. So they will know probably next week, or at least no later than the week after that, if that's going to be included in part of that, the big federal project, the $295 million project. And other than that, tough decision tonight. I really applaud you all for the diligence that y'all put in on the trees. The citizens appreciate it. That's a hard thing to go through. But it is the ordinances, and we have to abide by the ordinance. It is what it is. And like I said, if there's something that we need to sit down, I know that y'all are working through those trees, tree ordinances and stuff like that, sit down with council and hash those things out. You'll probably get a pretty good attentive ear from all of us. So congratulations on what you did. You had to do what you had to do. But I know it was tough. Other than that, I'd say, put, put some warm clothes on. It's fixing to get cold around here. We're going to, we're going to freeze to death.
That's an excellent update. Thank you very much for taking the time to do that. Thank you. No, appreciate that very much. Oh, speaking of city council, though, I did fail to mention one thing, and I get to jump in and do it now. And that is that on the next city council meeting in March, that'll be where we'll give the update, the Planning and Zoning 2020 update to city council. So anybody has a free evening on March 3, I believe?
First.
First? Oh, I was close. But March 1, definitely take all the support I can get. Okay, next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Yes, I, I think we're making good progress with the subcommittee. We've got a good calendar set out for the rest of the year. So hopefully, we can stick with that. And I did just want to follow up on that TechStop project that is going, that was, it went out for bid. That is the curbs, ramps, and sidewalks project. So all of our curbs and ramps, so the handicap ramps at all the intersections will be approved, improved to ADA standards. All the sidewalks that are, where there's no sidewalks in the downtown will be, sidewalks will be built there. It also includes the traffic signals at six intersections from 2351 to Cowards Creek. And that's all the traffic light poles will all be replaced. And it also includes the underground conduit for the future pedestrian lights for the downtown district. So it's a big project and good momentum going forward. And then the Friendswood Link Road zone change was approved with second reading in, on February 1.
Becky?
Yes, sir. So the ordinance subcommittee met, and we did make, I think, a pretty substantial amount of progress. We did, went over the first draft of the subdivision ordinance rewrite. So we have gone through and added things we were missing and reorganized, just to make it easier on developers to find our requirements when they are designing subdivisions. We included some legal changes that are required by a House bill that was passed in 2019. And then we started working on the tree ordinance. So we like a pretty big chunk of League City's ordinance. And we like a little piece of Pearland's ordinance. So we are going to put some pieces together and come in with probably a draft, possibly by our next meeting, maybe the sec, maybe two meetings from now. But I think we're kind of all on the same page. And we do have on our to-do list to look at lot sizes and a couple other items. But we're making good progress.
Super. Thank you. Mary Kay, anything? Great. Okay. Bar in anything else, the February 11 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody.